The whole Village of Lincoln Heights Committee Hall is now in session. Today's date is Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is six thirty-two. Roll call Ms. Randolph.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. No response. Councilwoman Nona Kahol-Mumia. Councilman Doron Daniels.
Present.
Councilwoman Tanya Key. No response. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter. No response. Mayor Rubika Kenzie Mumfree.
Present.
We have four who are present, three who are absent. We do have a quorum. And for the record, Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter is sick, and she will not be in attendance at either of the meetings tonight.
Okay. In regard to Committee of the Hall, we are allowed to meet when there are four council members present due to the fact that we are not voting. So for the residents, four are able to allow us to start for Committee of the Hall. Okay. So on the agenda, we have our old business, and the first resolution, which all the legislation is in everyone's packet. And so we'll go through them, and if anyone has questions, just feel free to elaborate. So far, is there any old business? Okay. All right. And so we'll have our new business. There will be the first reading of Resolution two thousand and twenty-five R seventy-eight, and that's Resolution authorizing Gaines Brown as the signer on the first financial bank national association account connected with the general fund account for the Village of Lincoln Heights. So, and that is sponsored by Mr. Key. So is there any questions regarding getting Mr., the legislation to allow our new village manager to be on the first financial account? Okay. Okay. Our next one would be Resolution seventy-nine, and that's authorizing Gaines Brown as our signer on the first financial national association account connected with Mayor's Court for the Village of Lincoln Heights.
You said seventy-nine, ma'am?
Yes. So seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Is for the, the general fund account, and seventy-nine is for the Mayor's Court for the Village of Lincoln Heights.
Okay. Let me make sure.
They may be.
They were just stuck together.
Yeah. They were real stuck together. So we'll wait a second while Councilwoman Baber gets settled. All right. So Councilwoman Baber, we have Resolution seventy-eight and seventy-nine. One is the general fund account for Mr. Gaines Brown to be the signer, and for seventy-nine is for the Mayor's Court signer for that for him also. Okay. All right. Our next one would be First Reading of Resolution R eighty, Appointing Elizabeth Ty, Magistrate of Mayor's Court pursuant to Section one nine oh five point oh five of the Ohio Revised Code. Is there any questions?
I have a question there.
Yes, ma'am.
So do we have attached any legislation? Or I guess we don't need legislation, but we do have the prosecutor, and the prosecutor is, has been okayed by Mr. Desai?
I have not got, he has not informed us because the prosecutor is paid through.
Mr. Desai.
Mr. Desai. But I do, and we don't vote on that, but for as the magistrate.
No, I'm just saying, are we? I know that Ms. Ty had recommended somebody. Has Mr. Desai agreed to that? Or is he looking for one?
I gave him the information. He just had, and the contact information. He hasn't given me an update on that yet.
Okay, so we don't have a prosecutor as of yet?
As of yet, I have not been informed on that. We do have like about two, two, three more weeks coming because the next date for Mayor's Court would be the, the second week, the second Wednesday in October.
Yeah, that's why I was just, but I mean, we'll ask him tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions regarding the, Ms. Elizabeth Ty as the magistrate?
Is this the regular amount?
Yes, ma'am. Basically, the amount is the same as Ms. Gaines. Nothing has changed. Okay. All right. And then I did write down the time for Councilwoman Key.
Thank you.
Six thirty-seven. So that's written on your paper. Let the record show. Okay. And let's see. All right. The next one is Resolution eighty-one, authorizing the purchase of village-owned land to construct thereon by any structure permitted by the zoning code, and that was sponsored by Mr. Lemon. Any question?
Ma'am, I'd like to just have just the first reading and refer it to economic development.
Okay.
Council Clerk, I guess that's how we do this. Council Clerk, I have a question. Please, for the record, I am curious as to who hired the housing officer? Where did that office come from? And who specifically hired Mike Lemon? Was that all of council, or was that a former village manager?
Councilman Daniels, to respond to your question, I'm not quite sure. I know there is some legislation. It was a question that was previously asked of Councilwoman Key, and I can provide you with the information that I provided her. That sounds to me, just based on my experience, that maybe that's a question that the Administration Department may be able to answer. I'm not sure. I know I didn't.
I'll direct my question to Mr., Mr. Gaines. Just out of curiosity to you is, would you by any chance? No, Mr. Gaines, I know, I know you're new at this. Not new at this, but new in this position. Who hired the housing officer? And is that out of the administrative office? Or was that a position that was created here on council?
So thank you for that question. That is one that I think is, you know, pretty timely and relevant. I do not have that information on hand. However, that is something that I can gather fairly quickly, especially as we are looking towards the previous resolutions that may have either appointed Mr. Lemon as housing officer or approving a contract to that effect. So we can do some recon on that and provide an answer to you.
No, thank you.
And like I said, Mr. Councilman Daniels, I can provide the legislation that I did submit to Councilwoman Key regarding that issue.
Thank you.
I just don't have it with me at this moment.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on Resolution eighty-one for anyone else? Okay. All right. Our next first reading of Resolution eighty-two, repealing two thousand and twenty-five R forty-three, Resolution authorizing estate of certain real estate, fourteen hundred Byrd Avenue. All right. And that is in your packet. The original is attached, which would then be Resolution forty-three. Manager Brown, would you have any information on that? Delaborate on it? I do know that this was possibly a property that we had agreed on, and maybe the individual may have changed their mind or something happened with the process. Is that why the repeal?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I am currently getting up to speed on all things related to the CRA. Mr. Lemon's last day was on Wednesday, and I'm not, at this moment, certain of the answer to that question. However, I'll be able to provide that to you upon the close of this meeting and at the next Committee of the Hall meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Mr. Manager. Did you say that Mr. Lemon's last day was last Wednesday? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So no longer employed as the housing officer?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
For this particular resolution as a repeal of the resolution previous, was there a contract that we had gone into under that particular Resolution two thousand and twenty-five R forty-three?
Yes, ma'am. And I, I'm thinking that the individual wanted to place something different than what they had mentioned, and they just decided not to purchase the property.
So the contract wasn't executed?
The person changed their mind. But I would, I would rather get more clarity on it before I give you a concrete answer to that.
Right. I guess my question would be if we're repealing a resolution for a contract that was executed, we repealing the resolution just repeals the resolution and doesn't do anything to the contract. I don't have the contract in front of me, so I don't know what the recourse was or how a person got out of the contract or what was done. So I don't feel confident doing a repeal on a resolution without the additional information. So perhaps a first reading.
Okay.
Until we get the rest of that information.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. So let's, that is a first reading.
Oh, what is this?
Next one is eighty-three. Resolution authorizing the sale of certain real estate. And attached is the listing from the Hamilton County Auditor's Office. Any questions?
I'm just wondering, is it, so the leader, that's the same company that we're repealing for fourteen hundred Byrd?
No.
Ms. Mitchell, she, the clerk can't hear you.
I'm saying, so eighty-three is the same company that is, that we are repealing fourteen hundred Byrd for, correct? Are we on eighty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
They got the same address. So that'd be a first reading. Okay.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
We're repealing forty-three that was sold to Leader and Company LLC. And then we're offering a resolution to sell it back to them, same company, for the same amount. Nothing different.
More information. I agree, we need more information on that.
Yep.
Most definitely. First reading on that as well.
I say we refer because I wouldn't want to do a first reading on something that is that.
You want to refer?
It's very tentative.
Correct.
Right. So yeah. I think the first reading on eighty-two is fine, but table eighty-three to the next meeting.
Table both, then if that's the case.
You want to vote, you can vote to table both?
Well, I think we can have the first reading, but.
Council Clerk, Clerk of Council, do we have any just further information just on the Leader and Co.? Because even if I just do a quick Google search, it comes as multiple things. But I was just curious, is there any more information given? I'm assuming they are a, a business here within Hamilton County, like a, a tax number or anything of that nature that we might be able to use to just figure out who these individuals are, who the business is?
Councilman Daniels, I just get the legislation as far as how the contract was put together and who didn't say what. That would be something I think would be under the Administration and/or the village solicitor. When I get the legislation, basically what I get, I give out to council. I don't always get the particulars of any contract information, but I'm sure it's housed either with the Administration Department and/or with Legal Department.
I apologize to put you in this situation, Council Clerk. I totally understand. So I now address my question to you. Sorry, Mr. Gaines. Can you potentially, do you have any information on Leader and Co.? Or just who their, their business are, just what they may do? Just kind of curious on who they are.
Yeah, for sure. So, looking at the legislation as it was first presented, the first reading was in May twelfth of two thousand and twenty-five. I've only been here for about four weeks. I'm not currently up to speed on all the property sales in particular. I have like the, I have some of the numbers for the CRA in terms of like revenue brought in from total sales and potential revenue from sales pending. But as, as it pertains to specific property sales, I'm not at that point just quite yet. But I'm very happy to give you that information.
No problem. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, for council's information, if you read two thousand and twenty-five R forty-three, it says that when they first bought it, it was for a new construction of a single-family home. If you look, read in the Section two of two thousand and twenty-five R eighty-three, it says for construction of a dwelling authorized by the applicable provisions of the Village's zoning code. All right? And so we're talking about fourteen hundred Byrd. And I believe that's the individual, could be wrong, that came in and wanted to build a warehouse. So I would suggest that we, again, have a first reading on eighty-two, and then, well, really, I don't mean that. Go ahead and just table both of them. So.
I'm sorry, Ms.
That's what the information says.
Do you say they wanted to build a warehouse? Is that what you said?
I'm not certain. I'm just, I'm thinking that's who it is, but, so I'm suggesting that we, I agree with Ms. Key, that we go ahead and table both of them. Till we find out for sure the provisions of a zoning code as to, because most of the property is supposed to be done for single-family homes. I mean, it can be for business as well. But when individuals come in, I have already expressed that I think that we need to know what they're building and see a plan the way we used to do years ago. We want to do something, come in, show the, the building inspector, whatever, usually come in and show us, oh, this is what they're looking at, da-da-da-da-da. So.
At least a Google.
Fourteen hundred Byrd.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the, for the, for the record, from my perspective on what transpired here is that an organization came in to purchase property. And then it's my understanding that the, the commission recently voted to approve the land use study, which the land use study looks at that area a different way. And now that organization is trying to come back in and purchase that property at the rates of a single family to build light industrial. That's what it sounds like without, and I'm just saying that for the record, just from my understanding of what took place, that may or may not be the case. But hearing that Mr. Lemon is no longer in that position, I'm not comfortable hearing any of the resolutions containing the CRA at this time until we get some more clarity and, and information. Because that property now, if it was voted on, that we're going to change our land use or we're looking at our land use along that area. And I can't for the life of me right now just visualize what fourteen hundred is. And I'm sure I can when I go back and look at the map. But that area becomes more valuable with that new zoning in that area. And so selling it at a residential rate would not be to our advantage if we sold it now. So they purchased it, I get it, they want to get out of it. But if they wanting to get out of it because now they want it rezoned as commercial so that they can build a commercial property that generates more funds, it would not be beneficial for us to sell it at residential rates. Top of my mind, just to put it on record, I would not feel comfortable even doing first readings on any of these at this time. And I think we should come back to it once we get, once our manager get the opportunity to look more into it. And I'm sure Ms. Mitchell and Economic Development has had some conversations about some of these things, and we can learn more about it. But I know the spirit of the land use plan was to put us in a situation where the village can have opportunities to earn more in that area for light industrial. And this would not be part of the spirit of that plan.
Just for the record, it's at the corner of McIntyre and Byrd.
The, Madam Chair, the fourteen hundred is right there across from, there's a house across from the Saez, and there's a lot next to it.
Yep.
And the gentleman, if I'm not mistaken, has already purchased the property on Lindy.
Purchased.
He owns the property on, he, he purchased the property on Lindy from a private owner.
That's, that's different from this, though.
But it's connected.
It's connected.
That's why.
He's buying up lane. Really cheap. Because the land use study looks at that land, and we, I know because we worked on it, and it looks at light industrial down that lane.
Yep.
And so, no, coming down Mangum.
Yeah, but what about Byrd?
I know, but Byrd intersects with Mangum right there. So that whole slot of property coming down there, we identify in the land use study as light industrial. And so I'm just saying that, and that might be their play, and that's a business move, and I get it.
Oh, I don't, yeah, exactly. But I'm just, I didn't think that it included Byrd up. Of course, because you got, you know.
It's, it's, it's the whole thing. It comes all the way down past the restaurants, and then it becomes more heavy industrial down at Shepherd and Mangum. That's the land use plan. I'm just telling you what the land use plan is.
Byrd Street.
It's purple. It's purple on the map.
All of Byrd Street is?
No, not all of Byrd Street. Byrd and Mangum, that whole.
Right, but he's not at Byrd and Mangum.
East block.
He's not at Byrd and Mangum. All that property where.
I'm saying this legislation.
True holding this was in the lot behind.
That is all, even going, well, look at the map again. I'm just telling you, based on what the map showed as the recommendation from Hamilton County when we was putting together that land use plan, this gentleman is looking at what had been proposed and what was voted on. That was voted on from the commission. And so from the spirit of it, then it becomes, let us get to the point where we can make that land commercial property versus residential property, and then the village can recoup more resources and more funds from that, for that sale.
All right. So we're going to table all three.
Eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three?
Yes, ma'am. Will we be tabling this Resolution two thousand and twenty-five R eighty-one as well?
Yes.
All three of them? Sweet.
Until further conversation. We want to sell.
Yeah.
I get it. You're not giving them.
Yes, eighty-one, eighty-two, and eighty-three. All right. Next is Resolution eighty-four. Resolution eighty-four is support for the Mill Creek Triangle Trail feasibility study. It's just for support. And they came before us, let's say in twenty-three, that, toward the end of twenty-three. They came before us before, and we, I think we went all, this has to do with the Triangle Trail. But the, the organization has mentioned that they'll be glad to come speak at the next council meeting to give everyone more information. So if you just want to do a first reading on that, that's okay. But they are planning to come to give us an update on the Triangle Trail feasibility study.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've already paid our contribution to that work a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we already did.
And so they're not asking for additional?
Nope.
Financial obligation? So what's the purpose of doing another?
They needed a, says a support letter, a support legislation regarding the Mill Creek Triangle Trail.
I thought we did that when we did.
It was just when everybody was putting money in, in twenty-three. And so we were, we put in like twenty-five hundred dollars. But now they're, have more information to give, and that's why he said he would be glad to come speak at the next council meeting. But they're not asking for any money.
Madam Chair, I was just going to say, Ms. Key, the last whereas says there's no financial obligation.
I saw that, but I was just trying to figure out why are they asking for another letter of support for the feasibility study when we did one for the feasibility study, when we also did the contribution for it? So, and maybe they're just looking for additional resources and they're looking for more up-to-date one. That makes sense, but just tell us that.
But either, we, either way, they'll be coming back to speak. I told them I would be glad for them to come back and speak to give us more information since it has been quite some time.
Have they changed the feasibility study, or did they even start it?
Yeah, they've already started.
Did they change any of the?
Not that I know of. But they're, they'll be coming back to speak to us. He was going to actually come today, but since we had a lot of resolutions to, to review, he said he would come at the first meeting in October. All right. And then we have the supplemental agenda, the first reading.
Excuse me. So what are we going to do with this R twenty, uh?
Eighty-four. It's whatever pleasure council is, if y'all want to do all the way through.
I'd like to say we would get all the way through because it's just asking, before the twenty-five hundred dollars was to do the study, now they're asking us to support what the study is saying.
Yeah. Is that what they're asking? Because I don't see that.
In Section one, that's what it says, that Lincoln Heights supports the vision of the trail feasibility study before the twenty-five hundred dollars was to do the study.
Then until we see the study, then why would we submit a letter of support? If we haven't seen the study?
Council Clerk, just for the record, and once again, I apologize, but just for the record, I also agree with Councilwoman Key. I don't know, how can I support a study that we don't have a study in front of us to support? Like, what are we, was it that we don't have anything to say that we support it? We don't know where it's going, how it's going to do, what their plans are, even in general. So it's kind of hard to support something without there being something tangible to support.
I will submit that for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So council, do you want to do a first reading? That way we all can get familiar with the, the context of it. And then when they come back and speak, they'll be able to back to the, give us probably a PowerPoint presentation.
Do we know when they can come back yet?
Yeah. Try to bring them back the first meeting in October.
Okay.
Okay. Resolution eighty-six, Resolution accepting money from the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners.
Resolution 86, resolution accepting money from the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners to provide a gap funding for the Memorial Field concession stand project and authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement therefore. Mr. Brown, did you want to elaborate since you sponsored it?
Yeah, sure. So, um, as we all know that the, um, concession stand is, is, um, a topic of discussion, especially as it relates to recreation. I have been able to, uh, take a couple of visits out there to Memorial Field. One in which I, um, attended a practice for the Lincoln Heights football team. And, um, one of the coaches, Mr. Trace Wakefield, was taking me around the, the field and kind of showing me, uh, the current status of our community asset. And, um, I took particular interest within the concession stand. There has been instances in which, um, the football team and others that have u- desire to use the space have not been able to access it, uh, for whatever various purpose, um, is associated for their ends. But, um, we have received, um, the low bid for, um, the concession stand. And that was, I think, $452,000, which exceeds the amount of monies that we, um, had originally appropriated for the concession stand specifically. And considering we have some connective tissue between us and Hamilton County, our contact, um, senior program manager, uh, April Galelli, um, has confirmed that we are able to receive an additional funding, uh, to the tune of, let me make sure. Oh, it's right here. Yeah, one, 110,200 dollars. And there will still be some, some monies left that we have to cover for the concession stand. Uh, I believe there's about $294,000 that, uh, we can appropriate to this end. But now that we have received the low bid and we have the, um, gap funding, we'll be able to move forward, uh, with, um, next steps.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown, so the situation where they thought that the concession stand was going to cost us $600,000. All that's been taken care of and this is what it is. I need to, I need to understand that because it just seemed like they were trying to, uh.
To my understanding, there may have been, um, misinterpretation, uh, something that may have been, um, miscommunicated. I cannot speak to, you know, what exactly happened in terms of communication prior to my arrival. But, um, the bid opening was, uh, on September 5th, 2025. I was here physically present. There were three bids submitted and the low bid was for $452,000. And as you know, uh, over the past few years, uh, the material costs have skyrocketed since COVID. And the same is also true and it even exacerbated more because of, uh, the tariffs. And so we are doing our best to navigate, um, the global supply chain as it is. But, um, thankfully we have, um, support, uh, downtown with, uh, in downtown Cincinnati with Hamilton County.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to ask you, Mr. Brown, have we looked into, and once again, if you don't have an answer to that, that's fine, any type of sponsorship or partnership at all on, on that as well too? To kind of close that 294 K gap, uh, now, uh, potential name sponsorship of that nature to try to, have we considered that or thought about that?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. That's definitely something that we are going to continue to explore. As it stands currently, we wanted to make sure we pursued opportunities for funding that we may not have to pay back. And so, um, it is my understanding there has been previous, uh, corporate sponsorships through, uh, the Cincinnati Reds, uh, through, um, I don't, I don't want to misspeak on a specific bank, but, um, the banks have also provided, uh, grant funding to us as well. I have not had the opportunity to explore that further, but, uh, that is certainly something that is on the docket to explore. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown, can you get us a copy of the revised concession stand, please? How it may have changed.
The blueprint, absolutely. Yeah, we'll be able to produce that.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, okay. And then that leaves, uh, Resolution 87 from the Ohio Public Works, um, Resolution 87, accepting monies from the Ohio Public Works Commission, State Capital Improvement Program for the street repairs to Van Buren Avenue and establishing a special revenue fund therefore. And also sponsored by Mr. Brown. Oh, did you want to speak on anything about Van Buren?
Um, not at this moment. We have collaborated with different, um, consultants, namely, um, Kleinger's and Verdantis, uh, for various street projects that we're doing. And OPWC has been a partner, uh, with Lincoln Heights previously. And this is an opportunity for us to pursue additional funding to, um, further our, uh, rehabilitation projects.
Any, any questions regarding Van Buren? Okay, all right. Mayor, um, refresh my memory, is Van Buren part of the sorta? Is Van Buren part of the sorta funds? I can't remember, Mr. Brown.
I can't remember.
Or was that, I don't.
Sort of. One moment.
Adams, Carey.
Uh, that was Jackson, Adams, Carey, I think McGee possibly.
Okay, so this is new, this is new, okay. I did have a question for you. So, um, as far as where are we at? I think the first street they were planning to work on is Simmons. You know where we're at on there? Along with the other ones I knew.
So with Simmons, um, let me make sure I'm looking at my notes correctly. I was planning to give us a bit a little bit later, but we can go ahead and, and move forward towards that. I do know that through the project that we have with Verdantis, I think that's a Jackson, Adams, uh, McGee, that construction is supposed to start this week. The phase one of construction is supposed to start this week, uh, that is going to be, uh, concrete. That, uh, phase of the project will be completed within Q4 of 2025. And, um, the second phase is asphalt and that's going to be completed in, in Q1 of 2026. But with respect to Simmons, let me make sure I'm, I'm pulling this up correctly. Spare me one moment. It's kind of tricky to, yeah. Let's see. Okay. I don't want to take up too much time on, on this, but, um, I will provide you an update on Simmons. I know that there's supposed to be some movement on that here really soon, but I can't recall off the top of my head. I know it's in my emails, I just have to dive deep into it.
The reason why I ask, because I saw some gentleman about a week ago, they were highlighting the street. So I figured, I knew it was about that time. And then as far as the other streets, normally I know we had, um, Kleinger and C.T. Constable. When they did Chamberlain, they reached out to the residents. So I wasn't sure if this new company, if they're going to reach out to the residents and let them know if they're going to be inconvenienced.
Yes.
They only do that before they start.
So, so I, I have my, I had it in a, another document, not in the document I had pulled up for, um, today's meeting. But, um, Simmons Avenue, this is a sort of project for community impact. The, I believe Duke was replacing a gas main. And, um, they have began, uh, contract work. They are doing, um, portions for, um, water mains in late Septe- late September. And they're going to be doing, uh, top work, uh, in late 2025. So there is movement on that. But, um, all the finer details in terms of like specific timelines, I'll make sure to provide that to you, um, soon.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
For residents such as myself who live on Simmons, the contractors have been admirable. They've been very communicative to us every step of the way. So I just wanted to share this with the village manager because that has not always been the case with a lot of our contractors who've done some street works, not really communicating to the residents. We've had a lot of, uh, residents to come and complain about a lot of different things. I don't know who the group is, I don't know who they are, but they have been communicating every step of the way, um, at least with us. They've been very forthright. When they're replacing whatever they, um, deconstruct, uh, it's done in a very, uh, good way. And so, um, I'm pleased at the work. I'm pleased for the employees who worked on that contract. I, we've had even residents from other, the neighbors come out, they're having conversations with them. So it's a really good team. Whoever is doing the work is a really good team. So, um, but I promise you, if there's anything that doesn't go right, we will definitely be calling. Having two council members in that area, um, we're definitely watching that, so good work for them.
I second, second Councilwoman Key's comments on that one.
All right, thank you. All right, so any miscellaneous business?
Council clerk, I have miscellaneous business, two items. First piece of miscellaneous business, I'll be introducing a resolution, a motion. I guess that would be technically Resolution 88, um, emailed everyone at least about, about two weeks ago. And then again today, um, just a resolution that will be directing the village manager to instruct the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office to review all available evidence from February 7th incident in Lincoln Heights and the issue citations or any charges for any violations of law ordinance. And I'm declaring that an emergency as well. As we all know, Mr. Ruffin was, you know, held in the middle of the street. We've seen that, we've seen situations where the neo-Nazis have threatened our own sheriffs, uh, with bear spray. Um, and then obviously, um, the situation where they have also been ducked off into, you know, not just past Lincoln Heights, Heights, um, Lincoln Heights Elementary School, but then also our, our community, um, a little south of us as well too. So, um, I also attached the Ohio Revised Codes that I feel like they had violated. But this is something that I will be mentioning in miscellaneous business as a, as a resolution and as a motion for us to pass, um, tonight.
Any question?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now resolutions, do they usually come from the solicitor? Or can any council member put a, uh, resolution on?
Any council member can.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't have any questions. Were you asking, is there any other miscellaneous business? If you were ready to move on?
No, we can move on, but if there are no questions on this, we can move on. Okay.
I did have a miscellaneous business.
Yes, ma'am.
I will be, um, at miscellaneous business during council. We'll be talking about or requesting, um, a review of our solicitor, if not a motion to, uh, have the village manager locate a new solicitor for the village of Lincoln Heights due to no confidence in our current solicitor. So that will come as a verbal motion.
Any other miscellaneous?
Just random. Um, are we talking about the Wi-Fi tonight? I didn't see on the agenda, but I appreciate this nice ink filled packet.
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Clifford A. Bailey of TechSoft, he, uh, was originally scheduled to be, uh, present with us on the September 8th meeting, but that meeting was canceled. He will be physically present, I think, at the first council meeting in October. So we'll be able to explore what this looks like, uh, a little bit fur- further down the line. But I do have some details associated with that, uh, that I think could be very timely and relevant, especially as, uh, the public may be interested.
Did you have, uh, a report today that you want to do that, or did you want to talk about that now?
Uh, we can talk about that, uh, within council.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Are there no more miscellaneous, uh, motion for adjournment?
Who made the first one? Okay, thanks.
You got your first and second? Okay, all right, it's been moved in second, all in favor? Okay, all right, we will resume back and the next.
Seven thirty?
Yes, we got a few minutes.